Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the council meeting tonight. This is regular city council meeting of Tuesday, September the thirteenth, twenty twenty. We welcome you. Call this meeting to order. Join us with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Brad. To establish some positions of a forum, we'll have a roll call. Ward one. Ward two. Ward three. Here. Ward four. Here. Mayor here. Next item on the agenda, citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed speaker's card located table in the back of the training room and service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins are written comments received by four P M. On the day of meeting. On any agenda item or any subject matter, they will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the open meetings act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public's criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace are prohibited by law and shall be called for the chair to terminate the offenders time to speak. I have several cards. Got one here on an item not on the agenda. Chris Katmeyer, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Would you step step up there and give us your name and your address?
Yeah, I'll be real quick. I'm Chris Katmeyer, address twenty seven Riviera in Rockport. I live in Austin. Now I have Beverly, Bev Gilbry and her husband Willie. And there's about twenty or twenty-five of us that just started a brand new S T R short term rental alliance of fellow stakeholders about short term rentals. We know that they're starting a big conversation possibly some policymaking that's happening. And there's about, like I said, about twenty, twenty-five of us. We have a meeting tomorrow at the chamber. The chamber is hosting the organization and we just want to let y'all know that we're here and we've already made some good strides. Vanessa and I already visited. We've got a meeting tomorrow at one thirty. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It's the only one I have on items not on the agenda. Speaking on item number seven, Jeff Hut.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir. We're gonna do it right now.
We're going ahead and do it.
Yes, sir. All all citizen comments are gonna come at the front now.
So y'all, you're doing like Fulton's doing?
I don't know as Fulton did.
The state statute says that we have the right to address you during a during, start my time, because if we're gonna go and talk about this, state statute say I have the right to discuss something when it comes up at the agenda item before after discussion. And we're gonna play this game. You guys are gonna take all comments up front and then we're gonna have to wait.
We're gonna take comments up front and items will be considered by the council and we'll try to address your concerns.
And then you're gonna like, once your agenda item comes up thirty minutes later, you're gonna remember what I said, you're gonna answer my questions.
We're gonna try.
Which I also have. How am I gonna get to ask another question?
You won't.
I won't. I have the right. Do I not within the state statutes to ask you questions during agenda and have, really?
No, sir.
I do not.
No, sir.
This is ridiculous. Your predecessor, Pat Rios, brought five police officers down here during the during the budget time. Your city council bullied you into going with one tax rate after you went with, after you told them the no new revenue rate. It's a continuum of like corruption and deception. It's ridiculous. When is this time gonna stop? So, do I get six minutes? I only get three minutes for both of them.
You'll get three minutes each. Yes, sir. Do seven right now.
Are you doing three minutes each?
Yeah, he's got two separate.
So I only have.
Okay.
Forget it. It doesn't matter. This is a sham. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
All right. Jeff Dinger regarding bid rejection.
My name's Jeff Dinger and my address, I'm your neighbor. I'm down there, got the property across from your new city hall.
Yes, sir.
Allowing people to park there, put material there for free.
Thank you.
And it was used during H E, the the property when Hurricane Harvey hit, everybody marshaled there and we had to, and FEMA used it for free. But talking about city property, I'm here to talk about item eleven that says deliberate and reject all bids received on or before August fifth. I submitted a bid August fifth. It was two o'clock, two P M. August fifth and submitted one at one fifty. Went out of the car, make some phone calls, came back, see if they opened them because my attorney said they opened them right away. Well, they didn't. And the communication has been very meager on this, but anyway, so it sounds like you've made a a decision to reject all bids and there were two bids. So I guess during your deliberation, I'd like to just find out why you're selling the property in the first place. I don't think you should. And I would like to know why you put it on a bid, a bid process rather than just list it. You'd get more money on that, for sure. I'd like to know who bid on it, what the bid amounts were and why they rejected. One more thing. And this has to do, saw video of Cole and the the new buyers of Pearl Point. And it appears that a rubber stamp was made to do away with the exclusion of HUD vouchers. So now it appears that HUD vouchers, which are ductile, which are malleable, which are flexible, which had just been changed on May twenty eighth to include Ukrainians, Afghans, non-citizens, that the rental standards now will be set by HUD. Am I wrong? Maybe maybe the media can help me with that. That's about all I got to say. Well, yeah, but there's some, well, that's all I got to say. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, sir. I have comments from Evelyn Von Vias of nine thirty-three Hickory Avenue. Ask if these be read into the record related to items seven, eight and nine. For the record, I'm opposed to the nine point two nine increase in property taxes and city increases. You're going to make it cost prohibitive to live and work here. Also have other comments that person wrote that asked that the councilman from her ward read.
Do I?
No, she's sure. No, I'm just getting that out of the way.
Christie Rutledge, fourteen eleven Dana Drive, item number seven. If I am not hearing person, I want my city council rep to read comments. I urge Rockport City Council vote no against agenda item number seven proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget based on the unused increment rate, which increases property taxes nine point three percent, one hundred ninety, one hundred seventy-nine thousand from new properties and four hundred twenty thousand from existing properties. The city of Rockport's long range spending plan includes nine percent property tax rate increases through twenty twenty to five, but Rockport demographics show that the median household income is at least seven percent below state average. As a city of Rockport trying to tax out middle and lower income families, municipal spending that requires large tax increases hurt average family the most. The wealthiest wealthiest top earners can inform, can afford to absorb nine percent property tax increases, increases every year. Average sharing was conned. If average Rockport residents have to live within our budgets, why doesn't the city have to live within its budget? The reality is that Rockport taxpayers have to make hard choices. Some have to do without prescriptions, medical and dental care, medical insurance, eyeglasses. The city pool can be funded by hot tax, saving taxpayers two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The budget includes unnecessary items, pay and retirement increases across the board and higher amounts for certain senior city managers with large travel accounts, city secretary, and increases for economic development corporations. The E D C has more than three hundred thousand in their bank, enough to operate without taxpayer funding. Many city positions have remained unfilled. Where is the savings from over budgeted items? Sales tax and interest on investment revenues are underestimated while expenses expenses are over exaggerated. What about the unspent bond funds? How much is available for capital expenditures? Vote no on agenda item number seven. Tighten the budget, don't overtax your residents, raising taxes is not necessary. Item number eight, Christie Rutledge, fourteen eleven Dana Drive, urge city council vote no against item number eight, two point five two cent per percent property tax increase. The city financial director misled this public and city council last week claiming that the proposed unused increment rate did not represent a property tax increase. This is not true as evidenced by the city's notice of public hearing on tax increase. When I asked on August fifteenth for the property tax calculated spreadsheet, a state controller form, Katie Griffin declined to assist me by providing a link to that form. The property tax increase is the highest possible rate without triggering an election. Last year, Ms. Griffin proposed the disaster tax rate. When council voted no for the no new revenue rate, Ms. Griffin attempted to get you to change your vote. Ms. Griffin has based the budget on a necessary high, higher unused increment property tax rate for the main purpose of keeping tax rate high. Vote no on agenda number eight. Tighten the budget and keep the tax rate as low as possible. The city can adopt no new revenue rate again this year and revenues will be sufficient to cover expenses. Item number nine, Christie Rutledge, fourteen eleven Dana Drive, vote no on any tax rate above the no new revenue rates. Christie Rutledge, fourteen eleven Dana Drive, item number eleven, vote no against agenda item number eleven. The city needs six hundred thousand additional revenue according to the proposed budget. City Hall is valued at six hundred thousand. The city must accept any offer to purchase the old city hall and use the funds to offset tax increases.
Do we have any others coming in? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. As soon as I find the right page, I'll read you what we said. Yes, sir. All right. My second page in here. All consent agenda items listed are considered by routine or as routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members show requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Any questions or concerns wish to remove those? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any further questions? Or debate? If not, call for vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
We presented before, but it's the same number we provided you earlier. Uh, we are showing a teeny tiny decrease in building permits and we do not have any FEMA reimbursement. Um, revenues listed this year. In the past, we've always been able to help with our budget, knowing we had money coming in from FEMA, but we no longer have any identified revenue with the exception of that associated with City Hall, which is not going to go into the general fund. And on the, so this is my, this is the fun slide. So we talked so much about property tax. I wanted to give you guys a couple of slides as to how we came to the number we came to. So if you'll look back in 2021, the column on the left, that was our adopted tax rate, point three nine two seven two zero. And that was off of a taxable value of 1.564 billion. Our calculations, and I'm going to show y'all those in just a moment, gave us the 2022 no new revenue rate of point three five two eight eight five. And the unadjusted voter approval tax rate of point three five two five two two. Through discussions, through budget workshops and the need in order to provide the services that our citizens are requesting, we use the unused increment rate for 2022. And that added about two and a half cents to our, um, our original tax rate. And that brings us to point three seven eight one four nine. That is again, the tax rate that is within your budget and it is also the voter approved tax rate. As certified on Texas Propeller Board Number 50856. It is certified by Anna Marshall, the county tax collector. So I know it's kind of tiny and it's hard for you all to see, but there is a link on the city's financial transparency webpage that takes you directly to the county's database for the last five years of this calculation what she just stored. But I'm happy to answer any questions. The part that's kind of, oh wait, that didn't work. So I'm going to try to describe. So there's the big box and there's the little box just above the signature. It's the top one, it muted on me. It doesn't work properly. Okay. So anyways, I'll just tell y'all where it is. So, and it's kind of hard to see and I apologize that it's little, but the, the narrow box with the, the dark line on the top and the bottom, just above Ms. Marshall's signature, that is the final calculated rates that we presented to you just a second ago on that slide, the no new revenue, the voter approval rate, and they actually show the de minimis rate. So this is what the final certified rates are that come from the county. And what they do is they verify all of our calculations before and make sure that we've used all the right numbers and then they certify it and present it to us. And they do keep five years of this on file. So do we have any question? I got one more fun slide for y'all. So, um, we kind of talked, I believe it was last council meeting and maybe a little bit in the workshop about the history of our property tax rate. So the top one is a history of the property tax rate. You'll see that it steadily climbed up until 2018 and then it has stepped its way back down. Uh, the far right column is 2022. That's the rate that we do have included in the proposed budget. Uh, and correspondingly, you'll notice the graph on the bottom is actually the, um, property assessed values. And you'll see that that has somewhat started up and steadily increased with the exception of the year following Hurricane Harvey. Um, but they kind of go opposite of each other. So I wanted to give you all that vigil so you understand why we do what we do and give you some of the information that we work with as we put together these projections. Continuing on in our budget highlights, we have the general funds. Um, these are some of the items that we've talked about during the budget workshops. We were looking at a municipal cost index of 12.24% and a consumer price index of 8.98%. Since that time, July is out, I'm still waiting on August. I'll look before council to see if maybe they posted that. But the municipal cost index did decrease in July to 9.89. And however, the consumer price index for that same period of time is holding pretty close to that. It's at 8.45%. And I believe I heard on the news this week that they're looking at 8.1%. So it's still high above 8% and that's where we have the majority of our costs in materials and supplies. We did show an 8% increase, if y'all remember that from the budget workshop. We do show an increase in personnel costs. Um, we've talked about the change in our health insurance, how it did increase by about $50,000. But if you'll remember, we went back and lowered that. It was going to be, um, well over that, but we did change the, the, um, policy itself to increase the deductible and make some other changes within the policy that reduced our premiums. Um, we had an increase in our municipal retirement contribution that's about 50,000. Um, and we also have, um, we have included in our acting pay for three employees and that acting pay is for a human resources manager position at information technologies and our public relations. And we've talked about that when Richard was here. And then the last thing that kind of added to our expenses that are a little bit different and out of the ordinary is we do have costs for bringing on our new team member and leader, the city manager. So those are somewhat one-time costs that they are in the budget and they did have a little bit of an impact on there. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I ask a question? Um, just the employee cost and so, um, do you guys look around at surrounding counties and how they pay their employees? You guys are pretty comparable or will be on the high end, low end?
In all honesty, one other thing that I didn't include in there, we do have the 5% cost of living adjustment included in that. Um, we do every other year, every three years, we have done a compensation study. And I believe 2020, we brought that compensation study to you. I'm looking to see, okay, I'm getting annoyed that was the right time. Um, and we had a company do it that was not as familiar with the state of Texas and how things work within Texas. I do anticipate within the next couple of years, we'll have another firm come in and do a compensation study. That study leveled up several of our positions, including our police officers and our communication, um, officers. What we are learning currently is that the city of Rockport, along with every other city that we've talked to, is struggling with retainage and retention as well as recruitment. Um, there's just not a big pool for us to pull from. So are we comparable in pay? Yes. Are we comparable in benefits? Almost. Our, our health insurance, the majority of our neighbors, neighboring cities are paying a percentage of the dependent care, where the city of Rockport pays for their employee only and the dependent care is 100% on the employee. And so that's probably the biggest difference for us right now. But we do see a little bit of gap with some of our field service worker positions at this point. Uh, we're starting to see where some of these cities further south are starting to pay. They're, they're, they're building a gap between us.
And that's kind of my, kind of going to my second question. If we're not comparable on one end, do you see, I guess, I don't think you guys noticed, employees leaving, going to other places if we're not being able to provide those benefits to them?
I do know that we've had a couple of recent resignations of, um, field service personnel going to other comparable municipalities. So without knowing exactly their reason for leaving, I would say it's becoming a factor.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Can we speak to the, the, uh, question that was asked, uh, by my decision? The, uh, 9.3% increase in property taxes? And in the long-range spending plan, which includes a 9% property tax increase through 2025?
Can we come back to that at the end? Cause I have a whole explanation for that.
Okay, sorry.
Because that actually has to do with last year's budget and not this year's budget.
Yes, ma'am.
So if that's cool with you?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll come back to it? Okay, cool. All right. So moving on, we have our enterprise funds. Uh, you'll notice that we have the utility fund. We did a separate hearing and, um, ordinance on our utility rates. Our water rate and our both water rates, we did increase by 3%. The increase for water is 100% pass-through to San Patoshio Municipal Water District, where we anticipate, we anticipate an eight to 10% increase. And that's based off of information provided to us from their director. Um, we do have other expenses in there that we've increased, some of them 8%, some of them slightly less depending on where they fall within, um, the CPI and the MCI. Um, overall, it's a 3.2% increase. We do also have that 5% COLA and the same offsetting insurance and TMRS increases as they are proportionate to that fund. Uh, natural gas, very similar. Um, we do see a 15% increase there and that is actually due to the cost of gas. Um, and we did increase our rate by 12.5%. Um, we do have the same personnel, um, expenses in there as long as, along with the COLA, the insurance and the TMRS. Um, one of the other funds that we've spent a little bit of time talking about lately is our aquatic center fund. So I wanted to kind of bring that one out so that everybody has a little refresher. Uh, we do have a contribution with partnerships between Aransas County and the town of Fulton. Previously, the school district was involved, but currently it's just the three of us. Aransas County does contribute approximately $30,000 a year and the town of Fulton, 7,000. While the city of Rockport offsets that, this proposed budget has a $263,000 transfer from the general fund. There has been questions come up whether or not that could be from the hotel occupancy tax fund. It could, provided it meets the proper criteria and it's documented how those heads are put in beds associated with that request. It goes through the same process with you guys that the other entities have did. But it could, um, that's a conversation we could have and that budget could be amended at a later date. So that's something we can bring back to you if you so choose. Um, in the last four years, we had used the community disaster loan to help offset the city's, uh, general fund contribution, which is why it hasn't been as large in the past. We do have a small decrease in that fund in a reduction in chemicals and maintenance supplies. And that's because we did replace some equipment and we've got some awesome staff people taking care of things over there. And they did focus on reducing, um, the hours of their part-time employees so that they can reduce that number slightly. Okay. One of the questions that we came to, uh, the other night had to do with our fund balance. We talked about our fund balance policy that's in place. And if you'll remember, um, we have, our current policy says for our operating funds, 180 days of operating capital. And for our, um, hotel occupancy tax, actually 365 days of operating capital. Um, we start this page out in the top left corner. We have the audited beginning fund balance. Those are the same numbers we referenced last week. Um, that's found in the city's, um, FY 2021 audit that we presented to you all earlier in the summer. So you'll see that's where we have the general fund started out in the current fiscal year at 4.4 million. Um, I used the exact same numbers that were in the budget so that there would not be any variance. But, um, as we talked about last time, we do not anticipate seeing a positive increase in the general funds, um, fund balance this year. But the first, the first box is, uh, the current fiscal year that we're in, 2122. And then that rolls down into where we estimate we will end up on September 30th of this year, which is just a few days away. That rolls into your first column on the bottom box. And, um, it, it rolls over and tells you, you know, where we think we're going to come out. This is based off of what the budget is. Like I said, the estimated year in balance is not tied down. That's going to change. It always does. And it even changes after I change it when the auditors get finished. Um, so just keep in mind that right now, and this is based off of what we presented in the budget, but we've already, um, we know that the project, year-end projections are changing. Um, because the departments are still wrapping up projects and we have a lot of boots on the ground and a lot of things happening right now. But if we were to use the exact same numbers that we have used in the budget document, we're going to show, um, a slight increase to our estimated general fund balance, um, but we're still going to be shy of our 180 days. So just wanted to share that information with y'all so that it was actually, um, a visual. Cause I'm a visual person. I like to give you visuals. The days of working fund balance, currently we have 125 days. Um, we're looking at maybe 132 days next year, depending on how we end up. So we're short, um, like we talked about, 45, 50 days. That was all of them. Okay. So Brad's question? I have a novel. So, um, that question relates to the FY 2122 operating budget, the one that you all adopted about this time last year. We put together a budget book and on page 221 of that budget and 222 is a multi-year forecast. In that multi-year forecast, we use different projections. And the second page tells you what those projections are and the first page gives you a visual of those projections. And, um, in the property tax line item, we use a 3% year-over-year increase in the property tax revenue. There's a bullet point on the narrative that says property tax rate. That was a typographical error. It should say property tax revenue. And so if you have the 3% from 2223, 2324 and 2425, that's where the 9% that's being, um, discussed is coming from. And I know there's another question, Brad, help me with it.
Not a, not a rate increase, but a revenue increase.
A revenue increase, yes, sir.
Projected of 9% over the.
Yes, and it's a total projection. It's a plan. In all honesty, that plan that we discussed this time last year is really kind of spied. And so we have new plans and new projections as we go through this process. And then based off of today's actions, we will build that next five-year plan that you will see come through.
We have pointed out in the past, and also it's important, I think, that you hear, if you haven't been to council meetings like this in the past, this council sitting right now cannot have an effect on next year's tax rate. We can't set it. There's nothing that can be done by us when we present a budget or when we pass a budget that says what it will go to next year. That will possibly be an entirely different group of people or at least two or three of them be different. So this council can't do that. It is year-to-year, the council that sits that year makes the determination on what budget is passed. And we couldn't say it's going to go up 3% each year and 9% over three years. That is not legal or practical.
So I also want to include on those projections, not only do we do projections for our revenues that are very conservative, we do extremely conservative projections on our expenditures. And so to adopt a budget, we do have to have revenues equaling expenditures. We cannot be over-expensed. And so we do look at those line item by line item and do multi-year projections. And what is provided in the budget document is somewhat of a summary of that multi-year line item projection.
All right, the, I'm sorry, the, uh, second part of that question would be, uh, the proposed 2022, 2023 budget based on the unused increment rate, which increases property taxes 9.3%.
Okay, so it increases property tax revenue. Um, so if you'll, and I was looking to see, I know I have the actual, um, she's referencing, they're referencing the, um, notice, the public hearing notice. And the public hearing notice states, and it's actually, you know, it's on the front page of this budget book. So on the front page of our budget book, um, which is what our public notice says, and it basically tells you the budget will raise more revenue from top property tax than last year's budget by an amount of 600, 600, 100, $600,140, which is a 9.42% increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax bill this year is 179,789. So what that basically tells you is that your property tax revenue is increasing. That increase is the total revenue from property tax that is split between your general fund and your, um, INS fund. So, but it is actually revenue. It's not stating that the tax rate itself has increased by 9.42%. But it's actually the revenue that is derived between the calculation of the property tax rate and the appraised values.
Right. If, if my math is correct, by the, the rate last year and the rate this year, we actually decreased 3%, 3-point something percent?
Correct. The rate itself did go down. However, the revenue derived from the rate did not because it is a calculation that gives us that actual revenue.
To the evaluations. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, again, we're going to look at two separate motions. The first motion that I will ask is that the budget as presented be passed as it is with the exception of line item 016022049. And for y'all's information, the amount of that line item is 25,950.
I move to adopt the ordinance adopting the budget except for general fund 01-602, line 2049 concerning the academic development council. And using that as a separate line.
I have a second. I have a motion and second. Any further discussion or debate? Call for a vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Second question, as for motion on, is to consider approval of line item number 016022049 individually. And the reason for this request is the possibility that has been risen for possible conflict of interest on the part of one council member. And legal representatives from the city has said there is no conflict, but to avoid a problem, we consider this item separately. It will become part of the budget that passed. Do I have questions on that?
Can you give me the line item one more time, sir?
It is 01-602-2049. Yes.
I move to approve line item 01-602-2049 as presented in the budget.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further question? Debate? No, call for vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
I am abstaining from voting on this matter due to conflict of interest.
Mayor, aye. Motion passes, four, one extension. All right. I am going to go from item number seven down to item number nine and consider it, at this time, item number nine, deliberate enact to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the 2022, 2023 annual budget and capital improvement plan. Katie?
Good evening. Item number nine is a formality that we're required by the, the state statutes to, to do anytime we have a revenue increase derivative from property tax. So, um, as we just recently discussed, the proposed budget, and which is now our adopted budget, does reflect a property tax increase. And so in order for that to take place, we do have one more step and that's to ratify the budget with the property tax revenue increase. And so that's what we're asking for you to do in this agenda item.
Questions?
I have a question. Why are we not adopting the, the tax rate before we do this morning?
I can respond to that. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Allison, can you state who you are?
Sure. I'm Allison Bastian Rodriguez. And I am a nonprofit, I would debt a warrant, and so I am a real estate firm. And the reason is, is whenever there's an increase, uh, an increased amount of revenue to be issued for the budget, then it's just a formality that this has to come before the adoption of the tax rate. And that is actually, uh, as per statute, under 102007 of Texas Local Government Code. So this, this ratification has to come before the vote of the tax levy.
Okay, thank you very much, Allison.
Sure.
Other questions? If there are no further questions, I'll ask for motion.
I vote for Brad's fight to adopt the fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual budget and capital improvement plan for this year beginning on October 1st, 2022. Will raise more revenue for property tax to the city's budget and provide an effective date.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further questions or debate? If not, a call for vote. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Okay, going back to number eight. Deliberate, deliberate enact on second and final reading of ordinance for the city of Rockport, approving the assessment and renditions for the 2022 taxable property as submitted by the appraisal district, levying a tax rate for $100 valuation for the city of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, for the tax year 2022 of 0.220511 for the purposes of maintenance and operation and 0.157638 for the payment of principal and interest on debt of the city for a total tax rate of 0.378149 and providing an effective date.
Good evening. So this is the final step in our budget process, um, the absolute final. And so what we are doing here is we are actually adopting the 22, 2022, uh, tax rate that we just discussed. And, um, in addition to adopting the tax rate, it actually gives us the authority to do the tax levy so that, um, come middle of October, those tax bills actually are distributed by the county for us. Um, we are presenting to you the voter-approved tax rate of point 378149, which does provide for maintenance and operation, 0.220511. And for the purpose of paying our interest and principal associated with our debt payments for the, is 0.157638. And we do recommend that, um, you do do the approval on these and, uh, of the ordinance as presented. This is our second reading.
Questions?
Katie, one for me? Of course. Can you restate what we, uh, stated last week? The average increase, property increase perceived by Rockport residents based on the, uh, taxable evaluations certified?
So, um, okay, we'll try that again. So, um, if we looked at the comparison, um, currently the average taxable value, um, is 273,658. That is it for 2022, where in 2021, the average taxable value was 248,000. So if we look at the, the concept of comparing the two, you're going to see an increase of approximately $60.74 on the average home. If it falls within that category, you know, some we have that are a little bit more expensive and some that are a little less expensive. But on average, we're going to see about a $60.74 tax increase, um, for the cities at the law.
And that would be, that would be only if your appraised value increased. If your appraised value remain the same or obviously decreased, you may realize an actual savings.
That would be correct.
Based on the, the tax rate.
On the, on the rate itself, correct.
I make a motion to accept second and final reading of the ordinance of city of Rockport, approving the assessment and renditions for the 2022 taxable property estimated by the appraisal district, levying a tax rate for $100 valuation for the city of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, for the tax year 2022 of 0.220511 for the purposes of maintenance and operation, 0.157638 for the payment of principal and interest on the debt of the city for a total tax rate of 0.378149 and providing an effective date.
I'm pleased to let you know that the Communications Board has approved and given me the authority to move forward with the build of the backup communication center. The good news is cutting the cost under half, well under half. As you recall, the original cost was over $800,000 and we've minimized that. I've eliminated some extra stuff, the electrical grounding and some networking and such like that, that I feel like we can build later or bring from the current center if we have to. But the cost is down to $386, 422. 386 total. That includes the entire radio system, the entire Motorola radio system, which would allow us the ability, of course, to communicate with all first responders in the city, the town of Fulton, and the county, law enforcement, EMS, fire, and any other services, I'm sorry, public safety agencies that came in, as well as the 911 system. So those are the main things that I feel that if we had to leave downtown at 714 East Concho and come here within an hour to get everything turned on, set up, and we're in full operation for emergency response via radio and 911 services, of course, for our citizens, so that we could continue operations, whether it be for a gas leak at our building that has happened in the past, or we evacuate for a natural disaster. I think that if we...
Sir, two.
It's actually just two. My thought also, because there's lots of other stuff that goes, that goes with the positions, but I feel like we could move equipment over here as soon as possible if we needed to. We can, we've, you know, we've got four working stations there now. We operate two 24/7. We can operate three or four or more. We also know that as we've talked, Mr. Donahoe has allowed for us to have some, a room here, two rooms, one for the employees setup and two for the, for the network and the, the networked equipment and the radio system and the racks for all the equipment that would require us to and allow us to run 24/7 operation out here in the event that we have to leave downtown. I ask for your support.
First off, thank you very much for finding us some cost savings. That's an amazing job. I know we cut some of the, I guess workstation down, but there's quite a bit of cost savings in there. And again, thank you for going back to the Communication Board and, and cussing, discussing whatever, whatever we had to do to get to where we are today. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You have a question? This is something we have been discussing all this time. Back to last week's council meeting. And I'm glad we got something worked out in the event officials of the county and everybody here to keep us in close communication for the event of a major disaster, particularly Hurricane. And I know the problem yet and want to say anything, and I hope this comes next month. I appreciate it.
One other question would be CGIS requirements. Is, are we going to require all employees that are in this building to become CGIS certified? Or how are we going to, how are you going to protect that room?
We would actually be to secure, we would actually secure the room. However, in the beginning, we would not bring CGIS database here.
Okay.
Actually, during Hurricane Harvey, we didn't work on the CGIS database for probably close to a week by the time we reestablished satellite connection and the equipment to be back online. So we would, we would go through an implementation of a new floor plan, you know, the network security firewall, a lot of that extra stuff that our IT experts would help take care of, and CGIS could come, the state could come down.
Yes, ma'am.
And go through an audit. However, I, in the beginning, and with this proposal, I'm not asking for us to bring CGIS data over here at the, at the time.
Okay.
In the event that we need to get there, we would have lots of guidelines to go through. The costs, there's not a huge cost in that from the state per se. It would be more the equipment and what IT has to do to have maintained CGIS compliance here.
Okay. Hopefully it'd be a short term deal.
Criminal justice information and some things, the protective part of public safety, yes ma'am. The state computer that allows us to run, give registration, drive, watch, inspect, criminal histories, et cetera.
Lee, I want to personally thank you. You know, we, as we went through this process, you know, we rediscovered how old this project really was. And this was contemplated when the news communication center was, was developed, you know, there was always some need for what is, what is our fallback plan? So I appreciate the effort you put into readdressing it, taking a look at it from a, from a different perspective and, and working with the Communications Advisory Board. You know, there was conversations when this was presented the first time about, you know, well, we don't technically need their approval to move forward if it's our money, our facilities, but that wasn't the right thing to do. And I appreciate that you were able to get consensus from those folks. I mean, we are one, one big family when it comes to public safety. And so good work there. I think the cost savings that you've identified makes sense for this project. You know, obviously, when you start moving in here, I'm sure Mike Donahoe will figure out a way to spend a couple more bucks on infrastructure in the building, but we anticipate, obviously, those to be, to be minor. So I, I'm excited. This is, you know, this is a big win for preparedness and resiliency for this community. And it's been a long time and it's finally happening. So thank you, Ms. Brown.
Awesome. Thank you for saying so.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll ask for motion.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the proposal as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question or debate? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
Thank you.
Number 11, deliberate an act to reject all bids received on or before August 5th, 2022 for the sale of Old City Hall being lot E2, Block 2, Dowdy and Mathis Outlots,
Just Outlot 3.
Yes. Also, anyway, also known as 622 East Market Street. These... Go ahead. That's all.
If you recall, our last meeting, we discussed the purchase of property. We received two bids on this item, and they both came with significantly lower appraised value. We discussed that it probably wasn't in our best interest to accept either of these bids. They want to reject the bids and put it out for an actual development or RFP and see how that goes. So that's our recommendation tonight that we reject all the bids and put the proposal out for a RFP.
All right. Further questions from the council?
I want to make a statement. I know we had someone speak on this. They were wondering who the, the actual bids were, and that is in our packet. We can state that too, who the actual two bids were.
Sure, absolutely. The packet, the bids were Paul Johnson, he wanted to do a front fee trade. The front fee was $264,000 with $13,240 cash. On that one, we decided it was not property that was assigned to us for the trade. And then Jeffrey Dieter put in a bid of $156,727. How much did you say? Katie, who's better for this?
I don't recall the exact dollar figure that it was higher than either one of these. It was something like 400. It was over 400. The appraised value is over 400,000 for the lot.
Okay.
And that was done by an appraiser. That's not the tax rule that's the appraised value.
Thank you. I just want to make sure those customs are answered.
Any further questions? If not, I'll call for motion.
I move to act to reject all bids received on or before August 5th, 2022 for the sale of Old City Hall being lots, east half of 2, Block 2, Dowdy and Mathis Outlots, Outlot number three, also known as 622 East Market Street.
Second.
Sorry, sir?
And to do the RFP for development.
And to initiate an RFP for development.
I'll second that.
All right. We have amended motion seconds. Any further questions? Call for vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Next item on the agenda calls for an executive session, which is not necessary. Therefore, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry. Yes, we do. I'm sorry. In fact, I was asked about that just a little while ago and made myself a note and didn't look at it. Katie.
Let's see. Ward one. We're awesome. There's a sidewalk sale this weekend in Austin Street. And BMW will also be burning burgers, so let me put that, come down and get a burger. We've got the South Rockport Burger, burn from night, 7:00. Address escapes, I'm 7:30. I think that's the right one. Great people. They are going to be doing a little bit of presentation. We've also got... Here in Rockport for a seat here. So, but we still have, you know, drainage issues, but they're not as bad as the last time. So if not, Ward one, we don't talk about the...
All right. For representation for Ward two, I attended about half of the Coastal Bend Council government's meeting on September 9th. They discussed the method of distribution for the Texas General Land Office Hurricane Harvey Community Development Block grant of about 180 million for the region. And I'll defer to, to Mayor here, and he was our, our primary representative, if he's got anything to add on that. I also attended with the mayor on September 12th, the Stormwater Floodplain Management Advisory Meeting, or Committee, and there was discussion, continued discussion about Tulley Creek watershed plan potential and request for the county to pursue a grant for that. And also believe there was action to come back for our formalized agreement between the entities pursuant to that project. And again, defer to Mayor as the primary representative on that. Beyond that, we had, with my extra spare time, I also serve as a, a member of the Rans County Livestock Booster Club and served as master ceremonies or mistress of ceremonies, how does that work, emcee, Saturday night, and raised a lot of money, had a great time for the 4-H livestock kids. And appreciate the mayor being there and Vanessa for coming to join us and, and taking part in that important event.
Right. Appreciate it. And I think I don't push it far enough. Anyway, we had a meeting in Victoria that the best interest in the whole thing was that Todd Hunter was there and spoke extensively about the work coming up from the legislature and things that will be going on of, I think, probably serious interest to most of the people in Rockport, as well as people between here and what may one day be a nice bridge, was, was concerned about the bridge and what might happen with that bridge. Chairman Hunter said that in his opinion, he believed that by the end of this month, there should be people sitting down talking responsibly about how that can come back under construction and get some things done over there. And they're hoping that that will work. That is nothing ironclad that says it will happen, but he believes it will. Had a good meeting with him, and he is very supportive of our community. If you don't know that, he's also supportive of other people in the Coastal Bend who are not in his district. He helps out a lot of folks with areas such as this and has been a thorn in the flesh of Tuya for a long time. We had, we had a good time visiting with him and, and a great time. I will also mention that last Sunday morning, I attended at Veterans Memorial Park, a memorial service for 9/11. And it reminded me and a lot of other folks of the fact that our country is free, but freedom has a cost, and that is eternal vigilance on the part of our people. We have to look at what's going on around us, and we have to report things that are wrong, and we have to say things are wrong when they are. And it was a touching thing. Katie Jackson down here emceed the program, did a great job. And it, it was not particularly well attended, but it wasn't particularly well advertised. So if you didn't hear about it, don't worry about not being there as long as you with the rest of the folks that were, remember that day and we learn from it. That's all I've got. Go ahead, number three.
Ward three, pretty quiet. We still have some long time existing drainage problems. We have a project that's not all the way completed, and I hear from it, hear about it daily. And just know that staff is, is continuing to work through, through some of those shortcomings, and, and we're working on it, see what we can do. That's all.
Ward four doesn't have much going on either. I can say that, thank you, Mike, for doing a little bit of the vegetation cleanup on Tulley Creek. I appreciate that. That was done about a week or two ago. And then I don't really have an update on, on the pipe, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we can get you one. That's about it.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order?
Motion proffered.
Second.
We adjourned. Seven fourths.